Hi and welcome. You are watching the Waterbury Board of Education meeting, our workshop, July, excuse me, August 1st. And we will begin with a silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Okay, can everyone join in with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And again, this is the workshop, and just to give you an idea of what the itinerary is for this evening, we will have our workshop, and then at 7:00 or thereabouts, we will pause to go into executive session. At 7:15, we will have our special meeting to take care of a few matters and then resume the workshop. Okay? Commissioners? So, good evening, commissioners, and we will begin with item number, no, excuse me. Is there anyone here to address the public? The pink sheet, okay. All right. I need a motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Motion to suspend the regular order of business to hear from the public.
I need a second. Thank you. I need a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The first speaker is Robert Goodrich. Robert, please state your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Robbie Goodrich, 14 Stanrod Avenue, Waterbury, Connecticut, 06704.
Thank you.
My name is Robbie Goodrich. I am the co-founder of an education advocacy and consulting organization here in Waterbury, Connecticut called RACE. I'm here tonight to address the board on several issues, but primarily, and the school staff, about the equity policy. I'm going to speak specifically about the process, and then I'm going to go and point out some specific issues that we still have with the equity policy. We're going to be ultimately asking you to remove this from the official board meeting for consideration next week until those changes are made. So first of all, it's not all bad. As an organization that centers racial equity in everything that we do and uses it as a filter, both theoretically and through our praxis, there's a lot of good things in the equity policy. It's a giant step forward for this district. However, it's flawed. It was flawed from the beginning. And let me remind the people that are in this room how it started. It started in a private room in Hartford where the tactics were to purposely exclude the public until the framework was set. At that point, once we found out that you all were doing this work with CERC and purposely excluding the public and keeping this in that, sort of in an enclave deliberation, we thought the process was going to be faulty and not deliver a good product for our students and families. And I think some of that proof exists here. So, May 10th, 2018, the Policy and Legislation Committee met. At that meeting, there was commitments made up to including monthly meetings, a professional development to happen, and that it would benefit the entire student body. So, for instance, we would call for that Delt team, the District Equity Leadership Team, that was supposed to be conducting monthly meetings, just to disclose what it is that they worked on since then. But I have a closer idea, we do, of what happened to those Delt meetings. Either they didn't happen, or whatever happened inside them was completely hidden or excluded from deliberations. I've broken down word for word the two equity policies, from May 10th, 2018, which is nearly 14 months ago. There's a total of about five or six words that are different. So either the policy didn't get worked on for an entire year, or that you all thought it was so perfect that it didn't need to be changed. Either way, none of that's been communicated to anyone in the community, not a single So until that information is revealed to the public, what happened at those Delt meetings, and what other type of deliberations in private that this board had, or that the staff had regarding the equity policy, I think it's a pretty fair thing to say that it shouldn't be voted on. So, part of that process, when we were working with BTS's Equity Matters Committee, we got a chance to review it together and then send back recommendations. Now, there was a team of professionals, experts on racial equity, lead agencies in the state of Connecticut, their executive director, a person who worked for Dr. Wentzle, who was the Commissioner of Education at the time, working on this particular issue for the State Department of Education, myself, Dr. Garcia, and a few others, on that committee, that made specific recommendations, a bountiful set of recommendations that have completely been ignored, absent a few changes of words from May to shall. Now, those changes are good ones, but there's a total lack of responsiveness with this equity policy. For instance, what's an equity verification process? Why is that so ambiguous? Why don't you just name it? If you're going to name something, a tool, and a policy, just name it. Are you talking about a racial impact and ethnic statement? What are you exactly talking about? So, and then there's very few, but specific roles for children and students. Subpoint G talks about students are partners. They must attend school, okay? And that they also must engage to reduce achievement and opportunity gaps. So we're going to place the onus on a four or five-year-old, or a three-year-old, or a six-year-old that's in elementary school to deliver promises in this policy? And I'm sure you haven't engaged them. I bet my Red Sox had on it. Your definition of equity is a poor one. It uses all students. And then it completely conflates the issue of equity throughout the entire policy. It's not all students. But there are mentions of the racially disparate outcomes that this district has been prone to. Finally, before I move on to a couple of organizational issues that we still need to address with this board, is that you already violate half of this policy. So you can't put this policy in place when you're already violating it. For instance, the latest disaggregation of this school discipline data did not include the CSSD numbers, and it was not racially disaggregated.
Okay, Rob, if you can just wrap it up, please.
I'm going to wrap up. Thank you. So organizationally, we have several Freedom of Information requests, two of which go back two months. Over 60 days now. It has to do with the CHRO Minority Teacher Recruitment Legislative Task Force Meeting Minutes. 60 days. We don't mind paying for it, even though we're the only organization that's forced to do it. But we'll do that, okay? And then this idea that we even haven't been responded to by the district or Corporation Council about our Freedom of Information Request for the Superintendent's Evaluation that was supposed to be completed on July 1st. We haven't even received a letter back. That's in violation of state FOI laws. That's why we initiated a complaint the other day. You're certainly not being proactive and transparent on these issues. I'm asking you to put this equity policy aside until the community has a better idea of what this Delt Committee did, and as well as has a chance to add some additional comment and reflection on it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Next speaker is Julian Lewis, please.
Good evening. My name is Julian Lewis. Do I need to say my address?
Yes, please.
Nine Ivy Lane, Waterbury, Connecticut. Today, I am speaking on behalf of the Williams community as a whole, since they could not be here. We are also speaking on behalf of Ms. Benjamin, a business teacher at Waterbury's Magnet School that we have recently learned that has been terminated. Ms. Benjamin has always been a large part of the students' lives, and has always been there to support anyone who crosses her path. To us, the students at Williams, business classes are just as important as the arts. Mrs. Benjamin's classes help us teach real-world skills that allow us to carry on later in life. Many of the students here who are interested in the arts are also looking to open up a business later. And without business, there is no art, and without art, there is no business. They are one of the same, and you can't have one without the other. One second. I know many of you would say that if you're really interested in business, you could just go on and learn it in college, and why waste time here in high school? But to be honest, in college, we might as well hit the ground running. Mrs. Benjamin is also one of the most supportive teachers at the school. She is like the epitome of what you want in a teacher. So firing her would tank the morale of the school. And kicking her out would, since we're three weeks away from the first day of the school, or, yeah, we're three weeks away from the first day of school, and kicking her out, since all of her classes are full, would completely send the school into chaos. There would be over 100 students displaced, and with the office barely working as it is, it would be in, like, complete chaos. I'm sorry, one second. I have other things that I wanted to say. I'm just going to, sorry. Business is the future, and if we are not taught, students, or if we are not taught business early in life, or like, high school, early high school, the system has completely failed us, all of us, because we need business. And if we don't leave high school learning business, we are not ready to do things like pay our taxes, we are not ready to start our own businesses, and we are inevitably going to be stuck in office jobs or dead-end careers. Resigning Ms. Elias was a terrible idea. I'm sorry, but it was ill-advised and was not, like, thought through properly. But firing Ms. Benjamin is basically Waterbury Arts digging its own grave, adding one more shovel of dirt into the tomb. And that concludes what I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Oh, wait, sorry. I also have a question. Are you really going to take this in consideration? Because if not, we're just wasting our time.
Okay. So, when we do public speaking, we don't respond to the speaker, but I'm sure there will be some discussion, but we don't respond to the inquiries. But we thank you for coming forward and speaking.
Okay. I just hope you take my inquiries and aggravations into consideration when you make your final decision.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? If not, I need a motion to return to regular order of business.
Motion to return to the regular order of business.
I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, we will begin at the very beginning.
Very good place to start.
Committee on Finance, Ms. Brown, if you could come forward. This is a request approval to apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education State After-School Grant Program, grant for the following schools: Wallace, Westside, Holtville, Tinker, Duggan, Chase, Park House, and Kingsbury and Wilson.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I'm happy to be here to let you know that the State Department of Education is once again conducting a competition for after-school grant funds. We're fortunate to be able to put together three applications at this time to serve students from seven schools, the seven that Commissioner Harvey just read off. The applications are really a specially important issue, because each of the schools that were identified by the Chief Academic Officer and the Assistant Superintendent's Board-
Louise, can you use your mic, please?
Sure.
Okay. That's better. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Each of the schools selected for this project were, in fact, running after-school programs up through June of this year, but they were ending. They were either in their fifth of five years, or their second of two years of funding. So this presents an opportunity for us to continue after-school funding for all of those children. The applications will be in the amount of $200,000 per application per year. The variety of activities that are required is broad, everything from literacy and stream to prevention and character building, nutrition, recreation, and health. And all of those facets are incorporated into our proposals. Are there any questions that I can answer?
All right. Do the Commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Sweeney.
Louise, I didn't hear, did you say it's a one-year grant?
Two-year.
It's two-year.
Correct.
Thank you.
It coincides with the state budget that was just passed.
Okay.
So it's a two-year cycle.
Okay.
Are there any, Commissioner Awat?
When will you know? You said it's a competition.
They say September.
They say September, so when will we know?
I'm hoping September.
By October or November, maybe, at the latest.
October, yes.
I mean, what's been the history?
The history is, then, later in the year, October, November.
Yes.
So the programs would not be able to restart until we were actually-
Until they begin funding.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are there any additional questions from the Commissioners? If not, we will move on to item number two, which is a request approval to apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education Primary Mental Health Program Grants for Duggan, Wendell Cross, and Sprague School. Thank you.
The Primary Mental Health Grant is a grant that's being offered to districts who have had it in the past. Waterbury has had this grant for 15 years. At Duggan first, and then Wendell Cross, and last year, we added Sprague. So again, for 1920, we are seeking funding, again, a two-year cycle for the state, for funding for those three schools to continue this prevention program. You may be familiar with the Child Associates that work through the program, working with individual students in play, child-centered play activities, to help them to better adjust to school, to build social competencies, and all, they're all in order to prepare them to learn in the classroom. Anything you want to add? Can we answer any questions for you about the program?
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Stengel.
Thank you. Is this program, a new program, or has been in effect before?
It's been in effect for 15 years in Waterbury.
Right.
And only existing grantees could apply again for next year.
Yeah.
So.
Our students identified who will be serviced by this program.
There are instruments that we use. TCRS is the official name. The program is prescribed by the state, Primary Mental Health Program. It comes through the Children's Institute. The TCRS documents identify children who are in a mild to moderate risk area. It does not address the high-risk child, or the well-adjusted child, but rather those students in the middle. And then the students work with the Child Associate weekly on an individual basis for at least 12 weeks. And then their post-testing afterward really is revealing that there are significant gains in the socialization of the children and their ability to cope in the classroom and manage their learning objectives.
Right. Do you have X amount of students that will be serviced, or do you have a ceiling on it, or?
Right now, we're estimating 20 per school. And that's based upon the fact that it's a very small grant. And I should say to you, as in the past, this grant requires a local match. The grant is $20,000, the local match is $5,000 plus. For us to run the program at the three schools, our match has been just about $7,000 every year for several years, and it will be again this year. So as I ask you for permission to apply, that's a factor that you might want to consider. But that has been approved by the CFO, as funds having been put aside for it, knowing that it's been an ongoing program for some time.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much, Louise.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Before we go any further, I neglected to mention that we have our student representative, Julie Barrels, and we just want to welcome you to the board. And thank you for, from Williams, from Waterbury Arts Magnet School. So thank you very much for-
Thank you.
Sitting in. All right. Commissioners, item number three has been removed because we do not need a contract. So we will move on to item number four, Committee of the Whole, Early Childhood Education Update. Ms. Rainville, Ms. Bergen, and, yes. Well, yeah, okay. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Maureen and I are here to talk with you very briefly about some of the work that's coming out of the Mayor's Early Childhood Cabinets.
And Commissioners, you should have a copy of this, and also there's something on the screen as well.
Yes. You have the full copy of the report. We've pulled out some slides in recognition of the time to go through, but we certainly are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you.
So the Mayor's Early Childhood Cabinet has been working for the past few years specifically around goals for children in the areas of health, family wellness, and early childhood education. And these goals are set very much community-wide. So we're looking at not just our pre-K students who are in the Waterbury Public School system, but also our community-based preschool students in our school readiness programs. Under the area of health, one of the things that we quickly recognized was that asthma was a very prevalent issue with all of our students in all of our programs. In our community-based programs alone, we have about 15% of our children have a diagnosis of asthma in the program, and so we looked at what do we need to do, how do we need to partner with the Health Department to have these children be successful and healthy while they're in school? Some of the results that we've been able to achieve is 100% of the children in both Waterbury Public School pre-K and community sites have an asthma action plan on file with their school. Asthma action teams are in all of the Waterbury Public School programs, and all schools have nebulizers and albuterol available for students who may not have their medication on site. And those were very big improvements to what we were seeing.
The next thing we're going to talk about is our health outcome was to deepen the partnership with the early childhood community to better understand the health priorities. So to that end, Waterbury has, and the Health Department, in collaboration with Bridge to Success, has joined, they've joined together to work on our Sparkler app initiative. This is just starting to get up off the ground. It's an exciting app for our families to work with in partnership with StayWellHealth, the Waterbury Schools, and private pediatricians. So what will happen with this app right now is we have an intern working with the families. She's taking input from the families who come in with their children at two months, three months, four months, puts it into her app. The information on the developmental milestones received by those children go to a Sparkler coach. The Sparkler coach determines whether or not that child might be at risk for developmental delays, calls the source of that information. So it could be StayWellHealth Center, it could be Wellmore, and then they reach out to that family where they feel the child may be at risk and inform them of services available, which could potentially be Waterbury Public Schools Early Childhood Program or Birth-to-Three Referral Agency. In addition to that, we're really excited to report that at the end of today, we, Waterbury Public Schools, have screened over 200 children since March going into our pre-K program. It gives us a lot of information, as well as fulfills requirements for our accreditation body. But more importantly, it gives us the children who are at risk for programming, those who are identified at risk between March and June, we immediately started up play groups to see if something more was going on with the child. If they needed further assessment, we were able to provide that. Those who are identified as being at risk, and it really isn't a large number, but it's enough that it makes us concerned, those families then fill out a concern sheet so that right from the get-go in August, those children will be identified to their teachers, and an early intervention process can be started so that we can hope to stem the gap that we think might already be there. Okay. The next one. Our next one, in conjunction with Health Outcomes, is our 211 provider with Get Connected to Waterbury. That's an exciting app that's on, that families can put on their phones, they can work on the computer. We've been holding training sessions at our family nights during the school year this past year. We had over 800 families and children attend our family nights. We had vendors come in from the community to provide food, activities, science activities, math activities, and we're going to expand that again this year. But we also had volunteers come and actually show parents what they could do with this app on 211. It's fabulous. It gives resources in the community, it gives, you name it, and it's there. This year, we're planning a new kind of family night. We're trying to bring in more of our city resources. So we have, we're hoping to get the fire department, the police department, the library, physical education, and bring in a personal social component to one of our family nights. And all throughout that, will be available resources targeting social-emotional growth for families and parent engagement.
Along the lines of our Health Outcomes, we've really focused a lot on creating a behavioral trauma system in Waterbury. We know that many of the children that we've worked with on a daily basis have experienced some type of trauma in their lives. And so we focused on helping our staff, our teachers, our parent professionals, kindergarten teachers, have the skills to be able to work with those children and those families. To that end, we've trained this past year more than 100 preschool, kindergarten, and paras around circle of security training, around trauma-informed practices. We've spent a significant amount of effort on the pyramid model, which is a tiered intervention model in early childhood. And we've had the staff view the video resilience, which is a movie that was made looking specifically at how children bounce back after trauma and what staff can do to support that. We've trained 75 teachers in what's called Using New Lens. It's a training that helps teachers look at challenging behaviors differently, and from the perspective of how do I help this child, not what is this child doing wrong? And we've spent a lot of effort training our staff on that as well. This slide goes back to the screenings to give you just a snap of the number of developmental screenings that have been done through our hospitals. So from July of 2017 to June of 2018, 1,205 children have enrolled in developmental screenings through our two hospitals. And so you can look at the number of children who are receiving screening, not only through our offices and through our school readiness programs, we've also expanded to ensure that children that we may not be seeing are experiencing and are able to have developmental screenings as well.
The next one we're going to talk about is establishing a culture of security for families and children in the community. We are working very hard with our Get Connected app that we already spoke about. We have 600 families who received information and activities, actually 800, to promote social-emotional development. We have packets, 100 copies of the book pouch that we're going to send out to families, and these are all to encourage parent engagement and how families can actively engage with their child at home so that they're not reliant upon our cellphones or our iPads, which we know can cause problems with some of the children. We're working very hard on social-emotional growth, our family nights. We always have vendors, we have stories, it always has a social-emotional component with it. We are going to be starting up, we have teachers who have been trained in the Circle of Security, which is a highly organized support group, support training group for families. And two of our sites that we're hoping to start it at in this fall will be targeted at our Family Resource Centers, which will be Reed and Wilson. We'll be looking for involvement from the parent liaisons to help us put that together. Circle of Security, I actually went through the training. It's- Circle of Security, I actually went through the training. It's a very intensive five-day training. And as Karen says, it wants you to get away from asking, "Why did you do that?" to, "How can I help you? Tell me why you did it." It's a less confrontational way, and it does open up a lot of communication with the parent, with the child. And we're hoping that this will really help us with challenging behaviors in the classroom.
Waterbury was also one of very few cities across the country who was accepted into the National League of Cities work. It was a competitive application process. We were selected. We're working with Bridge to Success. And this work really dovetails along with the work of the Mayor's Early Childhood Cabinet. It's looking at creating systems for early childhood. We often feel like we're a step ahead of the work that's coming out of the National League, which is great. We started this earlier than this process. And it's looking at both community leadership and commitment around early childhood, quality services, policies that are early childhood and responsive to families, and then neighborhoods where families live. How can we support those neighborhoods so that they're areas where children and families will thrive? And so that work continues. It's a multi-year project, and we're excited to be part of that with the National League.
And the next part is our creative curriculum. The Waterbury Public Schools preschool program is implementing a new curriculum this year. And I think that's my favorite part because it is encouraging, going back to basics with preschool. It is investigative, it's exploration, and it's discovery for children. It's using a play-based model, which I'm thrilled about. The curriculum company that we're using has been providing educational resources for young children for over 50 years. They believe that if you get children excited to learn about science and social studies and technology, the rest of it will fall into place because you're exciting them with exploration, whether it's digging in the garden or understanding the properties of matter, that it will cause language to develop in children. They will instinctively start asking questions rather than being told what they need to know. So that's an exciting part for our preschool. Let's see, and our final one is, again, the social-emotional focus on all preschoolers. We're really hopeful that with this new curriculum and our data and studies suggest that it will occur, children will be in a play-based model of instruction, challenging behaviors will decrease, and that intensive desire for children to learn and succeed will occur. We have, I think we filled it all. Oh, my, there we go. My last one, these are trends in early childhood education, just so that you can see what's happened over the last three years. Our birth-to-three referrals for our special needs population was 160 in 2016, 2017. And our updated numbers for 2018 to 2019, we actually had 215 referrals. So in the last three years, that's a huge increase of children coming in, presenting with being at risk. Our PPTs have increased. If you look at these numbers, it's amazing. Our private insurance payees have decreased from 2016, from 38 down to private insurance at 23 this year. Hardship, we don't have the data from 2016, 2017, but in terms of our fees for school readiness programs, we only had 10 documented in 2017, 2018. This past school year, we had 41 cases of hardship where parents had to have adjustment to their fee schedule. EIS out in the community stayed relatively the same. What I can tell you about our early intervention services for the last three years is that I do have itinerant staff going out to community sites, and we're averaging about 100 a year. So it's a lot, and I think we'll see that number grow.
That's it. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Commissioners, you have any questions? Commissioner Stengel.
With your growing program, do you have space? Where is it going?
We are being very
That's a really good question. We are being very creative about where we can license space within our community programs. Right now, we have 1,329 school readiness spaces throughout the city in addition to the non-school readiness spaces within Waterbury Public Schools, and we are maxed out. And so any increase that we are able to request through the state is going to really require us to look at, how can we do that?
Look at what?
How can we do that? Where can we find space?
We're averaging anywhere, well, we're averaging about 17 transfer-in students from out of state. This past year, most of them came from New York, but we do have children coming in from Massachusetts. And I think one came in from Rhode Island. So families are coming in, whether it's for affordable housing, the services that are being offered. We do have a high number of children coming in from other districts with IEPs. And those children are placed immediately into our classrooms. So our classrooms are quite full. We're having to look very carefully at how we are providing those special education service hours.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vanstone, Tom Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. You piqued my interest on that last statement. We're supposed to get reimbursed from the original city or town, state, et cetera, when special services, maybe Melissa is better at answering this. Are we going after those towns to pay us back for the services that we render? Because it's supposed to go back to their original point of acknowledgement for their right, if they were, if they'd come in from Rhode Island, we should be asking Rhode Island for that money back.
Only if, I'm sorry, only if they are Rhode Island's residents. That's only if that's their nexus. Once we become their nexus district, we are responsible for the costs related to that IEP.
It sounds like we're getting the worst of both.
When our students move out
Not for the students, I'm talking about for the finances.
When our students move to other cities, those cities pick up the cost of our students going there.
I thought the original city of parent follows for the payment. That's what my understanding is.
No.
Okay, I'm going to look back at that because we've had this conversation before, where that we're paying for our students to be educated with needs in other states. So I'm not sure why other states sending students to us, we pay.
I understand the confusion. It's because of where the nexus is. So if a parent lives in Waterbury, we are their nexus. If a parent lives in New Britain and their child is in Waterbury, New Britain pays the bill.
But if they weren't identified with a nexus prior to coming to Waterbury, we now pay that bill.
If they live here.
These are families that move here permanently, not that reside in another area, and we're educating them. These are families who have moved into Waterbury permanently and now become a Waterbury nexus.
It's still not what we've heard in the past, so I'm going to keep looking at this. Thank you.
Any additional questions, Commissioners? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you. All right, next up is item number five, the District Technology Plan. Mr. Zuda, if you would please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Dr. Ruffin, I'm here tonight, can you hear us hear me? I'm here tonight to update you guys on the tech components of the technology plan. There are five goals in the technology plan, engaging and empowering learning experiences. Goal two is assessment. Goal three is connected teaching and learning. Goal four is infrastructure for teaching and learning, and goal five is productivity and efficiency. There's members of the steering committee that has been created to oversee the tech plan. Goals one to three fall under Dr. Gregory Rodriguez, Mr. Darren Schwartz, Ms. Tara Battistoni, and goals four and five, Mr. Will Clark and myself. The committee responsibilities are to measure progress towards the objectives and key results, to meet quarterly, to make quarterly adjustments. Our goal is to set ambitious goals and commit to them to move the bar higher. And the OKRs will be used to measure progress and not performance. The purpose of the objectives and key responsibilities is to focus on priorities, simplify the process, suit the base needs of the organization, measure success and forward progress, ensure everyone is working towards the same goals, and to focus our efforts and foster collaboration. Goals one to three are being updated and will be forthcoming. And goals four and five, I'm going to talk to you guys about the successes and challenges towards those goals. On this Technology Department's foundation slide, you'll notice that we've been awarded almost $6.9 million over the last three years. Those funds have gone through, those are grant award funds. They have gone to infrastructure upgrades and classroom technology to support our core systems. The infrastructure upgrades that we've done are the Cisco switches, wireless controllers, wireless access points, core servers, firewalls, and the classroom technology has been the smart interactive TV boards, Chromebooks, laptops, and personal computers. The core systems that we support on a day-to-day basis are the Power School Student Information System, our staff email, district dashboard, and data analytics, school security, network support. We average about 25,000 work orders a year, and we support the new phone system. Over the past eight years, the number of classroom technology devices has increased over 100%. Upgrades in school fiber backbone to support the 1 gig to the desktop have been done and are complete. Upgrades to all schools for a dark fiber network that allows 10 gigabytes of throughput to each school has been completed. And we've upgraded the central office internet connectivity to 10 gigabytes for faster throughput to help alleviate congestion. This next slide is kind of just to give you a quick glance at our district technology age and some of the challenges that we have. Our PC ages are 44.79%, are four to six years old, 42% are seven-plus years old. The average PC lifespan is four to six years. By looking at these charts, you notice that we will need to replace 86.79% of our current stock over the next few years. This is all to support beginning-of-year, middle-of-year, end-of-year, and state testing. Some of the challenges my department faces are sustained funding to support lifecycle replacement, repair and maintenance of core systems and software, staffing to meet the demands of repair, maintenance, security, and uptime expectations, training and fidelity towards guidelines, policies, procedures, and standards, utilization of the core systems with fidelity and collaboration planning for strategic expansion and upgrades. Some of our solutions moving forward are to improve the technology infrastructure with targeted sustained funding over the next five years. We hope to support the lifecycle device replacement program, support stewardship of network and core systems. We want to increase and support access to technology in classrooms through collaboration planning. We better want to support the computing environment, directly support instruction, manage requirements for testing for local and federal, and targeted training of staff to maximize available technology and system efficiencies. We want to increase direct support to the schools. We want to increase tech support budget. We want schools with enrollment over 900 will need a dedicated field support technician to support, for support to be more impactful. And we want to provide support for security and phone system upgrades. The next chart is the capital budget request form that we submitted at the end of the year. I'll go through this quickly with you folks. If you look at this, I broke it up into four different sections. You have your school classroom devices for teaching and learning. You have your school security. You have your core systems and some district-wide initiatives for voice-over IP. If you look at the smartboards that we have in our current school district, we have 1,263 as a district count. The unit cost to replace those is $4,800 per unit. So you're looking at $6 million worth of smartboards in our school. The industry standard expectancy in terms of years is four years for a smartboard. So we would need to set aside $1.5 million a year just to have a phased-in approach of replacing 25% each year so we continue to refresh our stock. If we double life expectancy, I put a column in there to show that, we double life expectancy, we go out to eight, you would still need to set aside $757,000 a year. If you look at that section in total, we have about 17 million, it would cost about $17.5 million to replace our smartboards, PCs, and printers. If we go with the standard life expectancy, you're looking at almost $4.8 million needs to be set aside so we can refresh that fleet. If you double the life expectancy, you still need to set aside $2.3 million, $2.4 million. Currently, we rely deeply on Louise and her ability to get grants into the district for us. If you look at cameras, you look at NVRs, you look at our core systems and voice-over IP, I won't read each of those to you, but you guys can see, but if you look at the total number, you're looking at $21 million to replace, $22 million almost to replace our technology in our schools if we had to. We need, if we just go with the standard industry lifecycle, you're looking at almost $6 million a year needs to be set aside just to refresh on a, 25% of them over four years, four to five years. And if we double that life expectancy, you're still looking at $3 million needs to be set aside. But I want to show here the operating budget and device history over the years, especially for my department, which I can speak to. Over the past eight years, there has been a 6% decrease of operational funds, while at the same time, the number of devices on the network has doubled. You know, we've gone from 6,500 to 13,545 devices. If you look at our staffing support goals to support teaching and learning, goal is to ultimately reduce the number of schools per tech. Right now, seven techs are responsible for 21 schools. So that's currently three schools for each tech. We want to improve the response time and first call resolution rate. We want to ensure students, teachers, administrators, and staff have greater access to work and technology, and we want to increase uptime. We want to improve customer satisfaction. We want to improve days-to-close ticket ratios. And we want to reduce the number of PCs per tech from 1,045 to 731. The industry standard is 150 to 1. If we get to 730, it's still five times the industry standard. So we're just trying to make progress forward, and I'll have a slide later on to show you the, kind of put in perspective what a single tech does at a school versus these techs that are shared out. Staffing the tech needs, if you look at this chart, and it's just a quick visual to give you guys over the, you know, over 100% increase in the past eight years. Remember, this increase does not reflect any of the thousands of security cameras networked or installed over the last five years, or does the Internet of Things from heating elements to air conditioning controllers, all these other devices that sit on our network. You know, the techs have gone from 502 to 1,042 units per tech just on PCs alone, and we haven't added any staff at all. This is the slide I was talking about where you'll have the magnet school versus the traditional school model. The magnet schools, because of their funding from the state, they have a tech in their building that's there all the time. They complete, the completed work orders per tech on a year is probably about 300. And the open work orders, they average about 30. Versus a traditional tech where a tech is in these schools, it's shared between three schools. The average number of completed work orders, 1,800, and the open work orders is about 180. They're doing six times more work, and most of the time is because the tech is not getting there until a later point. So they try to fix it. They try to fix it quickly. Sometimes they're grabbed, and then what ends up leading is not corrected, so they end up putting another ticket in. Versus at the magnet schools, when the techs are there all day, they're doing a lot more correction, curriculum instruction support. They're helping teachers with a lot of the software packages, which I'll show you later in a later slide, for teaching and learning. So they're really supporting teaching and learning at the magnet schools because the tech's there all the time. You know, my request would be for support staff needs is, I need to hire a network manager, and I need to bring on three more technicians to get that ratio down to the 750. That'd be my request. The next slide here, we're looking at 50 different software solutions that we have to support in the schools. These are just student software solutions used for instruction, benchmarking, and testing. I'm not going to read them. It's a quick list just to have, so you guys have it, understand some of the challenges that we have. The district-wide checkbox just means that these are district-wide initiatives. And if there's not an X in that district-wide column, it just shows you that these are one-offs in some of the schools that we're trying to bring together. You have, then we have 21s used for administrative staff, staff evaluation grading, teaching and presenting that we support. Kind of put them out there for you guys with a little description of what they are and if they're district-wide or not, just for informational purposes. Next one is technical support. These are different software applications that we use for network administration, system, and system maintenance. From backups, script writing, to network monitoring, some of these are in-house created. Some of these are appliances that we purchased. But from web filtering, filtering, and firewall and content, digital recorders, video recorders, cameras, archivers, mail server, server backup software, storage area network backup software, and even the switch software for Cisco and Palo Alto that we use. And the other software, and there's also universal software that we support from programs from G Suite to Google Drive to Adobe, to Microsoft Office, Flash, all the other software packages that are out there that are used for content and classroom management. So there's a total just on those charts alone of 91 different types of applications. So there's a total just on those charts alone of 91 different types of applications that are supported by the department on top of all the devices and the network break-fix stuff that occurs. The next chart, I just put it in there for you guys, it's something I brought from the network world, just to kind of give you guys a life expectancy of technology and gear so you can see I didn't make the number up. This is just something that I found published out there, and we use as a benchmark that most people do. Just kind of shows you where the average life expectancy is in years for technology so we can reference back. If you go to the previous slide when I showed you guys the district technology and age, you'll notice that, you know, we have 86.79 percent of our current stock over the next few years has to be replaced. So, you know, we're keeping these things, you know, working as long as we can, sooner or later. I mean, it's coming more and more difficult, especially with the, you know, with the online testing. And not just online testing, everything else, but most, a lot of curriculums are coming online now, so, you know, you need a tablet or some type of device to be able to support that. And the last page I provided you is just kind of a quick student to computer ratio that I put together, kind of shows you each school, the number of PCs for students, for admin, the totals for the school, it's a student enrollment, I just do the math real quick, give you a student ratio. Notice some of the ratios are, you know, some schools have better ratios than other schools are like three to one, because there's, a lot of these, the schools that the ratios are better is because low-performing bond grants is targeting these schools. So there's about 17 or 18 schools that are getting a lot of money, and the other schools, because they're performing well, low-performing bond grants are not available. So we're finding different things, you know, from different sources to buy technology and put technology in there. So, you know, we were able to put in, end of year, buy about 18 Chromebook carts that we're able to put in some of these schools that are not being awarded these low-performing bond grants. That's all I have for today, and if I have any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you, Commander Vice President. Will, were you changing the slides from your watch?
Yes, I was.
Analog.
For a small fee, I'll show you.
It's an analog watch, so.
For one tech.
Yeah, one tech, right, one tech.
I'm going to take a little bit of a business approach to this, so I think my questions will probably be more towards Will. You know, when we talk, I'm with you. I know what we need, right, infrastructure-wise. So from a business sense, we do our budgets year to year to year, which makes our life difficult, right? It'd be nice if we could do a three-year budget, a five-year budget, whatever the case may be, but that's not how it works in our business. In the business world, though, we do risk, right, where we go to the folks that work for us, and we ask them, what are the risks and what are the levels, which steps, if this, that, or the other thing happens? And what that does for senior management, it tells us, if two years out, I got a $2 million bill coming, that maybe is not on the radar. What we do, and I'm not sure if you follow me, but what do we do in that respect to let this board know, when we set a budget, that a couple of years out, our infrastructure, which has a depreciation, is basically what we're talking about, that we're going to have a big bill coming in two to three years? What do we do in that respect?
It's a great point, great question, and what we're trying to do is communicate that and isolate those statistics for you. So part of this process and putting this together and also coordinating with the tech committee is to make it not just a wish list committee or a theory committee, but make it a fact-based committee, and we use terms like stewardship, like sustainability, longer-term planning. We put the capital budget request together, the result wasn't great from, with respect to what we got in the capital budget, which was zero, but the exercise was necessary. And so it's a part of communicating that to Mike LeBlanc and Sarah on the city side, and also talking to their IT side, has similar problems and issues, and identifying what these issues and concerns are, because we understand the general fund limitations. So working with the grants, as we've done historically, is one avenue, possibly making some capital investment for longer-term stewardship planning could be another, may not be depending upon the city's risk, potential and debt spending, or general fund. But we want to get that information out there, particularly when, and we want to connect the dots to the curriculum, because that's the most important. And to show that there is a direct connection with the purchasing and the curricular choices that are being made, and again, that's one of the critical elements of this committee, four and five is kind of the nuts and bolts, one, two, and three is the curricular planning. Those two must connect. And I think if and when they don't connect, and people are buying things in silos and vacuums, and a grant that's a one-year grant, you buy a bunch of stuff that Will doesn't know you bought, or can't maintain two years down the road, then your whole curriculum, you know, is now, two legs of the stool are gone. So that interconnection is really important, and so we work very closely and with that committee and try to get that piece going, and also work very closely with Doreen in the budget office, Suzanne, Louise, et cetera, to make sure there's grants available. Technology has to be in the conversation. It can't just be about whatever you're pursuing in the grant. There needs to be some stewardship support, maybe you can help with some tech support, and there could be a way to fund some of that. So those conversations are now happening more frequently, the language change is happening to think further out, and that's the type of lifecycle, stewardship, sustainability, those types of things we want to do. So we're putting together that capital plan that is a three, five, 10-year plan, whether it gets funded or not through capital is just one step of that exercise. Then that plan becomes a basis to try to slip into a grant, try to talk to Doreen about if funding becomes available, to discuss with Mike and Sarah on that side. And in some cases, there are collaborative projects. We're working on a project with the police department with our cameras, working on a project with the IT department with printers and copiers. Maybe we'll go in together, maybe we won't, but, you know, what, if we can leverage those resources, that's what we want to try to do. So I think that's that thought process is the big start, but more importantly is the data tracking and communicating it. So Will does a great job and his team of capturing that. We want to share it, we want to get feedback from it, and there may be things that we have to realize that may not be a priority, and then we could shift and put resources where the priority is. So really understanding that curricular connection is important, too.
I'm glad you shared that, because it's exactly what I'm asking, right? Cross-departmental, whether we can leverage, et cetera. We're moving fast in the IT world, right? So unfortunately, you can't buy, it's not like buying a fan, you're going to plug it in, and you're going to hope it works for 25 years. IT doesn't work like that. But if we can leverage the other departments through purchasing and jointly see the future, but what I'm asking for, though, here for this committee, right, and Commissioner No Wad, especially as Chair of Finance, if we already know, two years down the road, we have this $2 million IT price tag coming to us, we could try to adjust to get to that point. But right now, although it sounds like it's changing, we don't know that. We're going to go, well, it seems like we're always in the budget phase, right? We're all of a sudden going to get a request to say we need 20 more carts, right, computer carts. We have a new test coming online that we need this kind of cart, and it always seems like we're in reaction mode. But this is kind of telling me that we're now looking into the crystal ball.
Yeah, we want to be proactive.
Right, proactive.
And we also want folks to understand that sometimes you have to and you need to, for the specific need, reach to the top shelf, but many times, you don't. And so that, again, is a critical collaboration that has to happen. If Will knows what teacher X or principal Y needs, what the dream is, forget the, we are agnostic as far as a device, what do you want to do with it? Then we can do the research.
ROI.
And determine what's the most cost-effective, what will meet your need, but maybe have a longer life expectancy, maybe you have an additional warranty, maybe link better with what Will already has, so we don't have to do a whole bunch of programming to connect those dots. Does it link with Power School already? Does it, has it been tested in other districts, and so forth? Is that license fee a one-time fee, or are we going to pay that every year? Those are critical elements.
Will knows, I ask that all the time. Is that per seat? Is that one year?
You're right to ask it.
Right? I know enough to be dangerous.
Yeah, one more story, quickly, that one of those issues came up. So someone came to us and wanted to make a purchase for certain things for a particular location, and we did some research, Will connected with the vendor, and it turned out the license agreement, which was whatever, for a school or a classroom, the next layer up, which is a few more bucks, was the whole district. So for literally one phone call and a couple extra bucks that we leveraged from that grant, that's now available, should that work in that location, could be scaled and replicated at no additional purchase, because we did some due diligence, got the experts involved at what he's an expert on, not trying to step on the toes of the curricular expert, but how can it work together so that you can get that curriculum out without creating a technology problem?
I appreciate this very much, because do I want another $2 million bill in two years? No. But at least if we know that, and we can plan for that, and it sounds like we're getting a little closer, it makes our job easier, right? Because we at least knew it was coming, we at least knew why it was coming, and we could adjust. Something else may fall off, but at least we have good background to make financial decisions. So this is really good. I really appreciate this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commander Vice President.
Thank you. Any additional, Commissioner Sweeney?
Well, kind of a will and will, two-part question.
We can answer in harmony.
How does, how would bring-your-own-device impact this? Would that free up some of our resources on one side, you know, the hardware, but would it then put a drain on the systems itself?
We have an open network right now, so bring-your-own-device, we don't have a formal Board of Ed policy that we have to develop, but we don't discourage bring-your-own-device. It's an open network, students bring in their own technology, they can connect to the network, they have access to the Internet and do whatever they need to do. Will it impact, I mean, wireless is not a hard-wired network, so the more devices you get on there, it impacts, you know, performance, I guess, throughput on the network. We're looking at doing, one of the goals to do this year is to do a wireless survey at each school and find out where our weak points are, and see if we can shore those up by adding more access points, removing things out, tenuity in the signal, doing different things to kind of make sure that we have broad access, or adding more devices if we can, more access point devices so we can get throughput and allow everybody to bring their devices. I mean, we have 15,000 to 20,000 devices that are in our network, because every teacher's coming in with a smartwatch, a smartphone, a tablet, a laptop. So all these devices traverse, kids are, all kids have iPhones, they all connect to our network, so at any given time, you have about 20,000 devices traversing our network. There is a lot of traffic happening. That's why we upgraded the bandwidth from one gig to 10 gig to hopefully alleviate some of that bottleneck that was occurring. Because what we had to do in the past was kind of shut down the wireless network, the guest network, so we can perform online testing. So we would make that a priority, and then hopefully now with the 10 gig that we just performed, finished a couple of weeks ago, we should have enough throughput to allow anybody to stay on our network and not kind of throttle them or, you know, limit access.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, the 10 gig investment, again, some IT jumped on, trying to stay ahead of that curve, have, you know, a fire hose, not a garden hose, to allow for the expanded use, which we anticipate was great planning in the fiber network that's been built and invested in leveraging E-rate dollars, again, federal money versus local, very well done by Will and his team. You know, we want to be very careful about security, so having that protection in there when there are other devices coming in, there always can be issues, viruses, and so forth, so that's a big element. Of course, privacy issues, hacking, so forth, so we want to be very careful about that, so Will's very attentive to that issue. But again, I think it's, you know, having that conversation, understand what the future needs are in leveraging, and one quick story there, we are now working with our security group, we are addressing, you know, where are the cameras, using the security grant to upgrade some things, working with the police department and so forth, and we realized, you know, we don't have a great, you know, sort of mapping system that we can go to, that we could share with our security partners to help in an emergency situation. So, you know, we're working with Will's department and working with our facilities team, we're going to pull all those records and all those maps. We're not just using it for security. Will's got his team this summer in a project going around mapping where all the cameras are, you know, all the copiers are, all the Wi-Fi devices are, all these other elements, so now we have a little bit of one-stop shopping. So, you know, John Herman might need it for the cameras, Will can use it for the Wi-Fi, so if someone says, well, Wi-Fi's not working in the WAM's library, Will can immediately pull that up and say, no, there's one in this corner, that corner, there's something wrong there, that's not working. Or we can see, that's a problem, we need some more firepower there. So leveraging one project to do four, you know, is really something we're trying to be very, very thoughtful and mindful of and collaborate on.
Okay. I don't want to drag it out too long, but in terms of bring-your-own-device, how do we ensure that students are using their device for educational purposes during the school day to support their education? How do we do that?
Yeah, well, some of that's the security element, I mean, that goes a couple of different ways. You can limit certain access to certain sites and have, that sometimes makes it difficult to do some of the educational things you want to do. Will's guys spend a lot of time stopping various attacks from all sorts of foreign countries on a regular basis, so, you know, that's a problem. So what they go on and where they go, there's limitations based on our security system, but there's young folks in this office who are more tech-savvy than any of us, who are probably going around our system right now, getting into places they shouldn't. So when that happens, we get the alarm, Will's guys go back and they will plug that hole, but it's a bit of a cat and mouse. So there is some, you know, legitimate security concerns that we have to be very mindful of, and we put the policies together and the plans together to make sure that those students are only getting to where they're supposed to get, that are on task, and so forth. But as Commissioner Vanstone says, it moves so fast, it's very difficult to guarantee that.
Okay.
Yeah, they are filtered, so they can only go a certain way, and we're tightening that news every day as we learn more and more about some of these, the way, the workarounds, so it's a constant work in progress.
Okay, so let's start some conversations at policy level, then?
Yeah.
About bring-your-own-device and see what we can do.
Okay.
If it's going to help.
Yeah.
Let's see.
At least it's there, it's good to have, at least, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any additional questions? Yes?
Okay, so I would like to say that with the idea of bring-your-own-device, how would that work as, I mean, I'm a student at WAM, so I am very familiar with the fact that, like, cellphone use is not permitted in the classrooms. So I was just wondering, with the bring-your-own-device, like, idea, how would that work if we're not, like, allowed to bring in outside technology? I'm assuming maybe, like, would that allow us to start bringing our own technology and using it for schoolwork, especially if you guys figure out a way to block, like, any, like, access to inappropriate websites and stuff? Like, do you think that would open up our opportunity to use more technology?
Yeah, this would be a sanctioned method and policy to allow
Okay.
devices to come in and be used. But, you know, again, there's many layers to that, and certainly requires policy discussion and review. Some people have devices, some people don't have devices
Right.
and equity and so forth, so lots of things to think through, there's ways around that as well. We, without that policy, our goal is to move to, as best we can, a one-to-one access policy. So in other words, if there's enough firepower in the building that the principal, based on how they assign and schedule, that it can get to a computer if they need to, to do their work. As the chart shows, that's working better in some places and not so good in others, and the age of the computers, as you well know, varies considerably. So it would have to be sort of very policy-driven, I think, having a student voice in that conversation would be important, and frankly, that, they could maybe be some good texts for us, Will.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any, Commissioner Vanstone, Jason Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam Vice President, through you. Just a couple of questions back on the capital budget page. So when we're talking about the unit costs, is that what a traditional buy-one-unit cost would be, or is that already kind of factored in if we leveraged and we're buying 2,500, 3,000 of these at a time?
Yeah, that's factored in. This is our current cost structure, so I looked at pricing that we currently paid when we went out to bid on different devices, so. You know, when you're looking at PCs in 775, we get lower, but that's what a three-year warranty, the depot service, so we don't have to worry about that, probably adds, and that also, and there is the Microsoft Office licensing, you have to roll in, the endpoint security license has to be rolled in, so when you look at a total of 775, you pull $300, $400 off of that because of the licensing.
That's what I, I thought the answer was going to be, but I just want to confirm that. And for, you know, maybe not the laptops or something like that, but some of the other items, are there opportunities to bring these in the district other than purchase them, whether it be a lease or some other type of opportunity that might keep down, you know, an initial expense and also would allow us to turn things back in when end-of-life was approaching and just open into a new lease?
We looked at leasing a few times, and the issue is the upfront capital that's needed on the lease. You know, when you're looking at, you know, replacing 15,000 devices, you know, we were holding PCs eight to nine years, so we're getting our money's worth on these devices. holding PCs eight to nine years, so we're getting our money's worth on these devices. Should we have a faster refresh cycle? I agree 100 percent. But, you know, we'd have to do a study and figure out what the upfront cost is and then the, you know, the annual recurring cost. Right now, we have a $0 budget. I don't, you know, we'd have to set aside, you know, if you're looking at PCs and laptops of $10 million, you know, you look, you know, if you break that up over three years, you know, you're still looking at $3 million a year, right? So, and then you get rid of them and you have no equity left at the end of the lease, which really hasn't worked for us.
No, and I understand, and some things will work out better than others, but for the things that maybe that is the better approach, you know, maybe we are spending, to Will's point earlier, you know, slightly more, but we always have at least, I'm not going to say cutting-edge technology, but at least, you know, yeah, this generation's technology.
Right.
But it's a great point, though, because the market does shift and the pricing of these things changes. I mean, the laptop costs dramatically shifted some years ago, and the Chromebooks changed the market just a couple of years ago. Leases have not really broken in to take over the purchase, particularly because most districts basically use it till it literally blows up.
In laptops and PCs wasn't, you know, sometimes printers are a little more advantageous type, things like that. You know, it might not be the actual device itself, but some of the other things here on this list.
Yeah, I'll give you, I'll give you one example on the list, which is the NVRs and the security camera. With the grant, we're looking at Phase III and Phase IV flipping over to the milestone platform and sort of a collaboration with the police department to give them more access to our cameras. And that system works more on a server-based system, so it's something that Will's guys are more familiar with and kind of the NVRs are a little bit more proprietary and only works on the camera, and once it goes down, you're blind. Whereas a server swap-in, swap-out, boom, camera's back up. So, that's there where the technology has moved, so that is a significant savings right off the hop and on the back end, a significant savings. So, again, as the market adjusts and you see that the security market came around and became more sort of server-friendly and IP-based friendly versus analog and old VHS, that number will be dramatically different when we're done Phase III and Phase IV.
Thank you both. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Okay, in the interest of time, I'm going to, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the presentation, I'm going to go to item number six. Ms. Baldwin, if you'll come forward, please. Request approval for a college faculty request reservation agreement with Nochtuck Valley Community College.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Melissa Baldwin, Director of Special Education. I respectfully request that you approve a contract between the City of Waterbury and Nochtuck Valley Community College for the Waterbury Public Schools' use of a room on campus for a transition learning center program for our students with disabilities. There is no cost associated with the contract, which covers a 19-20 school year, and we have been in this particular location for at least five years now.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? All right, thank you. Item number seven, okay, you're still on. Ms. Baldwin, request approval for a student intern affiliation agreement with Southern Connecticut State University for speech, language pathology student internships.
So, you'll find the attached contract between Southern Connecticut State University and the City of Waterbury. It set forth a student internship agreement. The agreement is for a three-year term until June 30, 2022, and may be renewed for five successive one-year terms by mutual agreements of the parties at no cost to see. We usually have one to two students that come from Southern. They have an excellent speech and language pathology program, and we'd like to continue this program, and there's no cost associated.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Commissioner, Jason Vanstone?
How dare you?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying, I'm sorry.
My question really has nothing to do with the contract, but in the past, this relationship with Southern, with the internships, have we ever been, or how successful have we been once these kids graduate and they're out in the workforce that, you know, we're fortunate to hire them? Because if memory serves me, this is always a neat area.
It is, and usually it's about 50/50. We probably get about 50% of the students that we bring in. So, if we bring in two, we usually at least get one of them. So, it's, it is valuable.
Terrific, thank you.
Okay, all set. Any additional questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Baldwin. All right, we're moving on to item number eight. Request approval for an allied health clinical education affiliation agreement with St. Mary's Hospital for Crosby and Kennedy Allied Health Students with Trinity Health of New England Corporation. And this is for, oh, you're on, okay. You didn't, you didn't look like Darren.
No, not, not at all.
You never, no.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Thank you very much, good evening.
Dr. Ruffin. So, this is just a continuation of a contract that's already in place for the allied health program at Kennedy High School for grades 11 and 12. There's a total of 16 students that participate in each grade level in the allied health program, and through this contract, students are able to complete their clinical hours and off-campus clinical internship as part of their allied health coursework at St. Mary's Hospital.
So, is it Kennedy and Crosby or just Kennedy?
This is just Kennedy. I don't, there's a typo on there.
Yeah, it says Crosby. And so, how do we, is there a separate agreement for each high school, including Career Academy?
So, each high school has agreements with specific hospitals. So, Kennedy has an agreement with St. Mary's. I believe Willby has one with Waterbury Hospital. I'm not sure about Career Academy, what hospital they have an agreement with.
I was just going to say, is it the female healthcare? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any additional questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll move on. Okay, just for the information, item number nine is, has been removed because there is no need for a contract, so we'll move on to item number 10, which I was trying to cross off. Committee on Finance, request approval for Teach Like a Champion, an online training session license agreement with Uncommon Schools. So, this is Ms. Epperson.
Hi.
Excuse me, Dr. Epperson.
That's fine.
Good evening.
Commissioner Harvey, Dr. Ruffin, and Commissioners, we respectfully ask you to allow us to purchase Uncommon School, the vendor that is the author of Teach Like a Champion, and this provides professional development for the instructional practices of teachers for their classrooms. And it will be going to the eight C-grant recipient schools.
Okay.
Is there something to be distributed? Because it says something.
It should be at some point.
It's just a memo, it's not much.
Oh, it's not just a memo? Okay, sorry.
It's okay.
All right.
And it comes from the C-grant.
Okay. Any questions? Yes. Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I think you answered this, but I just want to make sure I heard it right. So, the total amount of the agreement is 34.8. All of that comes out of the grant? There's no city match or this?
No, sir.
Okay, we certainly don't need sir.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, be careful calling him sir.
Nobody needs that.
I'm working on this Southern life that I've brought here.
All right, if there are no other questions, we'll move on to item number 11. I think you're still on for that, Dr. Epperson.
Yes, again, Commissioner Harvey and Dr. Ruffin and Commissioners, we respectfully ask you to view and approve the National Institute for School Leadership, which comes under the National Center of Education and Economy. We passionately call it NISIL. It is a very extensive professional development for our principals. When we first got, when I first got here, one of the things the principals asked for was professional development, and NISIL is ongoing. It's a cohort-based executive development program, and it lasts a year, and it's, again, it's very intensive and extensive, so we're asking that you, you review and approve.
Okay. Questions on that, Commissioners? All right, Dr. Epperson, I think we're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item number 12, Mr. Clark, you're back on. Request approval for music mentoring services at Waterbury Arts Magnet School with the Waterbury Symphony Orchestra.
Thank you, yes. This is a request for approval in agreement with the Symphony Orchestra. This has been a successful program in the past, come in here and work with the kids and to play with the professional artists, and funded through the magnet program.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, any questions?
Just what is the cost?
I think it's, you have, is it 26,000 change? 26,000 change? Should be in your packet. Did you get that, Karen?
Well, that says to be distributed to, where is it?
I don't know if I updated it.
It might have been delivered tonight.
Okay, I downloaded the old one. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you're all set. Commissioner, you okay? Yeah, I know. Okay, any, any questions? All right, Mr. Clark, thank you. Oh, you're still on.
Yes.
Item number 13.
Yes, requesting permission for approval of a contract for Ambassador Wheelchair Services. This is our contract for medically fragile students, McKinney-Vento students, students with disabilities, that busing. We went out to bid, we received two responses. We had a committee which included Special Education, myself, Doreen, and Jeff Hunter, and selected the lowest bid, which is also the most, we felt, as a committee responsible bid. Also, it's our current vendor, who has performed well this past year. The rates are actually slightly below the current rates, and even with the renewals that are built into the contract over three years, it's still below the current rate. So, we are projecting, over the three years, $600,000, $618,000, $636,500, based on history and projection, but it really all depends on the student population that needs the services.
All right. All right, any other questions? Thank you. Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam President, Vice President. So, the numbers we're working off of as a guide, we went back into history and said there's been X number of kids each year that have needed to use this service, and it's averaging out at 600 grand, call it.
Correct. We looked at, you know, the last many years and what the number of buses has been. Jeff's already working on routes and so forth for next year. We know which kids are still in the schools, and we can sort of project that, and then we have a certain amount of transient population on McKinney-Vento that's been kind of going up, so we factored that in as well.
And if we underestimated that?
We'll be back.
That was my next question, so we'll look for an amendment to this.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clark, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And as announced as we began this workshop, we will go into executive session in preparation for our special meeting at 7:15, and I will ask for a motion.
Motion to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Okay, need a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we are in executive session. We will be in the back room area here. Thank you very much. We'll be right out, but for the 7:15 meeting. All right, thank you. We are now ready to begin our special meeting here on August 1, 2019, at the Waterbury Arts Magnet School. We will begin with a silent prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. All right, pledge of allegiance, everyone?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Role call, please.
Commissioner Watt?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez? Commissioner Padano? Commissioner Sabrina O'Dorno? Commissioner Stengel?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
President.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
President.
President Brown.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board pertaining to the matter at hand? All right, no? Okay, I will then move Commissioner Charles Stengel to item number one.
Item number 1.1, regarding the Westside Middle School House Principal Appointment. With the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the appointment of Lauren E. La Vecchia as the House Principal at Westside Middle School, effective immediately, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Okay, the request has been made, and second discussion.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I very strongly recommend Ms. La Vecchia. She has come to us very prepared to take on the leadership role, and to take on the leadership role as a House Principal in one of our turnaround schools. She brings with her a lot of experience, working with students on a multitude of grade levels. She brings teaching and learning experience to the district, as well as experience with careers and career pathways. She is a breath of fresh air and I think will be an excellent team player as the school takes on the responsibility of writing a very extensive grant for the Commissioners' network as Westside Middle School is a school interim.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, we'll do a role call.
Commissioner Watt?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Stengel?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Yes.
6-0, motion passes.
All right.
Ms. La Vecchia, will you come forward, please? Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin, Commissioners, for this opportunity. I'm really excited to join the family at Westside and get working with the team in place there, and I can't wait to join the Waterbury community. Thank you.
Did you bring any family members?
I did not.
Okay, well, congratulations.
Congratulations. Come shake our hands, but just be careful of the wires, please. Okay, you can shake the, shake my hand, and then you can shake those Commissioners, those guys over there and over here. Be careful.
If you knew you had to do all those, you would think twice. Nice to meet you. Good luck.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Stengel, item number 1.2, please.
Item number 1.2, regarding the North End Middle School House Principal Appointment. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the appointment of Sherrell Ann Herbert as the House Principal of North End Middle School, effective immediately, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made, and second, any discussion?
Thank you, Commissioner. I highly recommend Ms. Sherrell Ann Herbert as the Assistant Principal at North End, House Principal at North End Middle School. Ms. Herbert comes to us very well-prepared. She is a Waterbarian, and she has had an extensive opportunity to grow here in the city and brings a strong contribution to teaching and learning, curriculum and instruction. She's a team player, and I think she will certainly be an outstanding asset at North End Middle School, as that, too, is a school interim.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. We have a role call, please.
Commissioner Awat?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Stengo?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Yes.
Okay.
Six, zero.
Six, zero in favor.
Ms. Herbert?
Come forward.
Yeah, North End team here?
I am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each of the Commissioners, on the board, Dr. Ruffin, and the Central Office Leadership Team for this opportunity to be a part of the leadership team in the Waterbury Public School District. Additionally, I'd like to thank my wonderful family, who's had my back all the way, my wonderful source that are here as well, as well as friends who have come to support me this evening, so thank you all very much.
Well, you stand.
Family, friends.
As a student in Waterbury Public School District, I had a strong teachers and strong mentors who fostered my confidence and encouraged me to reach my fullest potential. As a House Principal at North End, I will provide support to our teachers as an instructional leader, and will collaborate with my administrators in the school to ensure that we will achieve the learning goals to support our students academically, socially, and emotionally. I will work diligently to provide the type of educational development that will encourage our students to be lifelong learners. Thank you again for your confidence you have shown in my ability and making me a part of this wonderful district. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Come shake our hands.
Congratulations.
Watch the wires, please. All right, thank you again. Sap applause for that? Thank you. All right, item 1.3, Commissioner Stengel.
Item 1.3, regarding the Crosby High School Vice Principal Appointment. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the appointment of Dr. Julia Trevino as the Vice Principal of Crosby High School, effective immediately, respectfully submitted, and so moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. Motion's been made, and second, discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner. I highly recommend Dr. Julia Trevino. She comes to us very highly prepared, with a multitude of experiences in dual language, in working with ELL, in working with teaching and learning and teacher supports, and curriculum and instruction, and she is a strong supporter and advocate for all children. I'm very impressed, and also, just as a very small point of recognition, Dr. Trevino has also had some background in Texas, and she, like I, got here to Connecticut as soon as we could. So, I'd like to highly recommend her for the position as the Assistant Principal at Crosby High School.
All right, thank you, Dr. Ruffin. We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Awat?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Stengo?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Dr. Trevino? Congratulations. And her family here.
All right.
Our Crosby family.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin, and Commissioners. I feel very honored and very nervous.
Don't be nervous.
Very happy, and I will give 100% to offer a high-quality education to every student in my new building. Very happy. Thank you.
Do you have family here? Do you have family?
Yes, my fiance is here with me.
Hello, fiance.
He is the reason why I'm here.
Good choice.
Okay, would you shake our hands, please? Thank you. Watch the wires, please. All right. All right, a great evening. Can we have one more applause for everybody? Thank you very much. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Move to return, move to reconvene the workshop? Second, please.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, excuse me, discussion. All those in favor? Oppose? Workshop. Thank you very much. All right, so I think we left off item number 14, and that's Dr. Rodriguez. Okay, request approval for revisions to high school graduation exit criteria policy. Dr. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Vice President Harvey, Superintendent Ruffin, and Commissioners. Today, we are seeking approval on revisions to the high school graduation requirements. As a result of the Connecticut General Assembly, they have created some new graduation diploma system that will enable students to work on the future of their choosing while allowing school districts and schools the ability to create a wide variety of learning pathways. A summary of some of the changes to the graduation requirements are that it includes an increase in the number of credits that are required for graduation. There is a significant emphasis on flexibility and multiple pathways. There are less restrictive course requirements. There are now required student supports and remediations built into the policy, and there is a new mastery-based diploma assessment requirement. This law took effect and, as a result, has changed our new graduation requirements for Waterbury Public Schools.
All right, thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Awat? Just quickly, so we're at 25 credits to graduate.
Yes, we were previously at 22, and now we're at 25.
So, I had the opportunity to have a discussion with another school district whose Board of Education did not allow credit to be given to students in the eighth grade that took Algebra I, because they were afraid they were going to be able to graduate in their junior year. With 25 credits, you'd have to be pretty aggressive to be able to skip your senior year of high school, correct?
Correct.
Is there an opportunity at 25 credits for that to be done so that a successful student could graduate or successfully leave the school district in the middle of their senior year to attend a spring semester of college?
We don't have any provisions in the policy for early graduation, but early graduation is always a possibility.
Okay, but at 25 credits, the likelihood of somebody being able to finish these requirements by the end of their junior year, even as we do now allow credit for Algebra I in the eighth grade, and likely Spanish, am I correct the way I read this?
Correct. This is, we are now providing more opportunities for students to gain credits before they enter the ninth grade, as well as students gaining credits through other experiences that are, that have yet to be defined.
And potentially are outside the district.
Correct.
Okay, but, okay, I appreciate what you're saying. Thank you. All right, are there any other questions? If not, we'll move on to item number 15, request approval of the new policy entitled Equity Policy.
I'm going to ask for some support here from Jackie Davis and Mrs. Jessica Ocasio. They were part of the district equity leadership team that helped develop this policy on equity. This work began in 2017 with the participation in a professional learning series that was sponsored by the Connecticut State Education Resource Center, otherwise known as CIRC. It was a four-district racial equity consortium to identify specifically how race impacts student achievement, and Waterbury was part of that four-district cohort that received in-depth technical assistance on a multifaceted approach to addressing racial inequity. Waterbury formed a district equity leadership team, otherwise known as Delt. It was composed of administrators, educators, and community partners that attended a courageous Conversations About Race Seminar facilitated by Glenn Singleton of the Pacific Educational Group. The seminar was designed to help leaders, educators, students, parents, administrators, and community participants understand the impact of race on student learning and investigate the role that racism plays in institutionalizing academic achievement disparities. As part of this work, the Waterbury Delt engaged in a collaborative process of composing a district equity policy and began the work of an Equity Transformation Action Plan. As part of that professional learning, they took steps to work out what it would look like if they developed that actual action plan. This action plan and the work that is yet to come will acknowledge those disparities in our schools and identify the district's role in eliminating them. The team based this policy off a sample equity policy from the Connecticut Association of Board of Education as a guide. They built in concepts and language relevant to our district and its specific needs. Within the newly-written policy, an equity verification protocol was noted, and this is a reference to a five-question protocol that is recommended in the Equity Toolkit for the Connecticut Boards of Education to screen any new and revised policies that may be proposed. With that, I'll open for questions.
All right, Commissioner Awat? I'll start with trouble. So, our speaker earlier tonight? Yes. Took exception to the term in the definition of educational equity of all students. Just as a rhetorical question, why wouldn't we want all students to have educational equity? And perhaps you, someone, could help me understand what he thought it would have said, while I thoroughly support what it does say? Anybody? Anyone?
I'm taking that as a rhetorical question.
Well, I guess I do need some... Oh, okay. Okay.
But, point of order.
Yes. Yes.
You know that we're not supposed to comment on what a speaker said.
I don't care. I want to answer to the question. The word is all. Okay. I'm not, I'm not, I'm... All right, noted. Noted, but... ...generating my question. The question is being asked by Commissioner Awat, so if we could just kind of give some background as to...
Some of the policy does define the differences between equality and equity, and when we talk about equity, we do talk specifically about closing gaps that all students are achieving.
Thank you. That's the answer I'm looking for. All right, any additional questions? All right, no? All right, thank you. Yes, okay. Commissioner Stengel. Commissioner Stengel.
Thank you. Is this the same plan, is this going through all boards of education in all districts in the state?
I don't have any knowledge of that. Does anybody else know? All districts are engaged in this work?
Okay.
So, it's not like a similar plan that all districts are using. So, this one was built by the stakeholders here in Waterbury, so it speaks very specifically to our community. And so, other boards of education are creating their own equity policy, but it is not like a cookie-cutter approach.
Did some of the language here and work come from CAEB?
Yes, it did. It was based off a sample policy.
That's what led my question, like, would CAEB just be working with the Waterbury Group, or is it statewide?
Well, this is part of the work that came out of CIRC and the four consortium, the consortium of four districts that were working specifically with CIRC.
Thank you.
Okay, all set, yes. Commissioner Sweeney?
Just in case it's helpful, CAEB has been working on the equity policy since 2013, 2014, so it's been very intense work at CAEB, and they only rolled, bowled out an actual policy a year or two ago. So, a lot of work, a lot of work, and they've worked with a number of districts, including Waterbury.
Okay. Any more questions? All right. Dr. Ruffin would like to introduce someone to us?
Yes, I know that I've been asked by some of the Commissioners to introduce our Director of Human Resource and Talent Management, and he's been to our board meetings and in and out, and he's here this evening, so I'm going to ask our COO to introduce our director and to make him real in person so that everybody can see him.
Not Memorex.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Just quickly, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce to you formally Lee Palmer, who's taken our position of HR and Talent Management. Lee was originally working with the consultant firm who was trying to help us find a candidate. Lee and I had worked together many years ago in a couple different capacities across the state, and Lee's been sort of a mentor and supporter of mine for many years, has worked for the state in a number of different positions, worked for a number of school districts, number of towns, worked in a number of states, and has held leadership positions, training positions, knows more about HR, has forgotten more about HR than most people will ever know, and was really someone who could be a great asset. When he sat there listening to Dr. Ruffin, Dr. Rodriguez, and to a much lesser extent myself, talk about what we're trying to do in Waterbury and what we're looking for, he sort of leaned over to me after the meeting and said, "You think I should apply for this?" "That's a good idea, Lee." So, he got off of the consultant group and put his hat in the ring and really, I think, was exactly what we were looking for, and has hit the ground running, as you'll see in the report we'll give you in a couple of minutes, just jumping right in on policies and support and working as a team member and collaborative, and all the things that I've experienced with him before in different places are coming to bear here. So, we're very happy to have him here and want to introduce to you Lee Palmer.
Well, it's absolutely great to be here, Will. Thank you very much for those kind words, and it's wonderful to meet you formally. And I can tell you that I'm extremely happy to be here. I certainly have jumped right into the fray, and again, some of the things that we've been working on in Personnel and Talent Management, we're going to review tonight. There's certainly a lot of work to be done, but I'm very, very impressed with the people here and the direction that the Superintendent and the administrative staff are taking to move the district in the right direction, and obviously, you're an integral part of that, and your support is integral to our success. So, it is, it's wonderful to be here, and I'm sure we'll get to know each other a lot better, and so I'll stop for now, but it's great meeting all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to working with you. We have some interesting items we need to discuss, and looking forward to see what your, what your goals are in terms of personnel. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions, or you want to wait until later on? Okay, well, thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right?
The next.
Item number 16. Okay, new school opening status.
So, good evening again, joined by Lee and Will here, both for his watchability, and the first few slides. So, I want you to take a little snapshot in your mind of this first slide here. That photo is going to come into play later in the slide, later in the presentation. Just capture that in your mind, and then we're going to flip. We wanted to give you a quick update on a number of the things we've been doing this summer in preparation to get ready for the school year, because we don't like anything to be easy in the Facility and Operations Department, and Dr. Ruffin likes to challenge us. We've added about 100 projects to the 100 we had planned, and I can tell you, we're in good shape across the board. So, just, I'll just run through this quickly, and if there's questions, we can hit them. But, so on the technology side, Will and his team, along with our facilities team, have jumped right into the one that crossed St. Joe's swing space, and that basically includes moving over many of the phones, the technologies, the smart boards, and connecting those things, getting Wi-Fi and support over there, installing the security systems and so forth. So, all of that is underway, and most of it's frankly done. At this point, we're wrapping up a number of the elements. In addition to that, Dr. Ruffin has a Welcome Center project that we're working on and building out, and essentially, that's a consolidation of some of our resources that are in a couple different spots that we formerly knew as FACE, becoming that sort of parent resource, being right in there with what we formerly knew as Intake Center. So, we have some parent support, some additional help with respect to registration and connecting to the school quickly, connecting to those parent liaisons, and supporting the parents when they have questions and problems on the back end, being able to go to a place where we also handle registration. Transportation will have a space over there, so Jeff will be working very closely with the transportation, the parent group, right in one spot. Jeff will also still have the role back with us on the budget side and so forth, but consolidating those resources, and Will and his team are working with us. We purchased an additional module in Power School to help with some online registration so we can make it more paperless. There'll be some kiosks that we'll be rolling out, so we're going to continue with the old way with this cycle, and then we're going to ease into, at the end of this cycle, end of the fall, the online, helping people get more accustomed to that, and we're working on that documentation, so it'll go right into Power School, not doing multiple data entry points. Also have our telephone system across the district. We're starting up that project, and we'll be going out to bid shortly on a copier project for print management support that Will is working on. In addition, we've aligned IT with security and with facilities, so we're working all together now, not in silos. together now, not in silos, with respect to Phase Four and Five of the security grant, so we're working very closely on the planning associated with that, essentially move out of the analog net VR system into IP camera milestone server-based system and that project is getting ready to launch. We've done bidding on the equipment, we'll be bidding out the labor side of it, coordinating with the state on our money as we're moving a few things around and with Mr. Herman and the team and police and we'll be moving forward with that in the fall and through the next year and a half. Also updating the website and our mass notification system app, really just looking at that whole technology piece of how we can better communicate. This summer, even though we're doing a number of projects, we are operating summer programs at all those schools, so we have community-based programs as well as our education programs in quite a number of our schools. We're feeding students at those schools, over 4,000 meals per day at those 40 summer feeding sites across the district, so our food service program is working very hard this summer. They're also moving into their central kitchen, the new central kitchen, that that's happening this week and more equipment is coming in over the next few weeks to get a soft opening of that at the start of the school year and then build up as we go. With that welcome centerpiece, we're working very closely with the health department, with our StayWell partners and others to make sure we're getting the word out and make sure we're getting resources and supports out for immunization and physicals that kids need, both to register and just at the grades that they need that to be compliant with the state. So that's a big project we're working on now. Academic academies, you know, at Wallace requires a lot of coordination work. Will's department's been helping on that and the tech side, getting the kids in schedules, working with the schools. Lee's group and Lisa and Dr. Revison, Dr. Baker, working with the schools as far as the scheduling, getting the kids signed up and all that. So a lot of work, a lot of redesign of who goes where and what and working with the staff over there at Wallace. Mike LaRusso and the team have been really terrific in helping us with that transition. Four elevator projects you know about are getting off the ground, that contractor's still sort of working through the approval process with the Alders, but the contractor's ready to go and we'll be, jump on that and four will begin simultaneously. Two more that you recently approved are in the design phase and we'll get those going after that to complete that project. Over 650 work orders have been performed by the facilities department this summer. That's the end of the school year, June 17 through July 30. More done every day. And due to our planning and oversight and the work with Chris and Ray and Mike, Bosco and the team, we've actually done all of that for less overtime than we spent last year and Dorian's been very helpful with that as well. Just a couple of photos on the left there, you'll see what the new classrooms at St. Joe's look like. For those of you who might have been in there, the last time we were at Swing Space, don't recognize the floor, it's new. Don't recognize the ceiling, it's new. Don't recognize the lights, they're new. Those are LED lights. We now have the smart boards are in there as well. All of the furniture's been moved over. We got a couple of classrooms set up. We're going to be setting up tours, Christian Vanstone with families and so forth soon. The teachers are in this week and hopefully next week, want to get the classrooms set up and then we can work with Principal Amato to get some folks in there on the right. Just showing the example of Sprague. 2.4 million square feet are being cleaned, waxed and prepared for the school year. If we just keep the teachers locked out for a couple more weeks, we'll be finished, but they really, really look great. I've been across the district, the team is doing a great job. There's two photos of Career High School, you see the shot on the floor there and the classrooms as well, clean from top to bottom. We're also not just working inside and the landscaping crew, Freddie and his team with Chris's leadership. One of the things we really wanted to focus on is what I call curb appeal. When you drive by the school, you want it to look like we care, we work hard and the guys have really done a great job in not just the mowing, but planting, the mulching there. We can't see it perfectly well, but Reed around the trees there, Buck Hill on the right. But I think as you go around the district, you'll find that attention to detail and getting the local maintainers in the buildings to help out with some gardens and plantings and things like that. On the personnel, I'll turn over to Lee here and he can jump in, but essentially just popping through there, really a lot of work on policies and coordination, so we're all speaking with a similar voice, we're getting communication out there as far as our hiring, as far as our onboarding, as far as our thing. What we found is a lot of different things are in different places, so we're taking the coffee stains off the piece of paper, redrafting them, reformatting them. Lee's got a tremendous library of job descriptions and policies and handbooks, but we're also working closely with Scott Morgan in the city side, so we're not going to do this twice. We want to do it collaboratively, so we do it, it's something we can hand out. SAW has been in, teachers union in, establishing those relationships. We don't want this to be something that's imposed on anyone, these are just things we all want to live up to and work on. Volunteer handbook, folks coming in, need to know what's going on and what they're expected about, diversity, employment, talent management plan, all of those things we're working on. That's working with Jessica and with Lee on the talent part. So all these things, one at a time, tick, 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 pushing through and getting those things out. On the performance appraisals, again, we have a system here, but tweaking, upgrading, making it format the same, consistency, those are some of the tweaks we're working on that Lee's an expert at and working with Scott on. Then use that as a tool. For an example, we do this annual performance evaluation. We wanted to make that an actionable working document through the year, so how do we line that up with what the expectation is for the maintainer on a daily basis? So what is that form that Ray and Mike have when they go school to school every day? That should link with the expectation for the annual evaluation. So no surprise if you're superior or if you stink, it should be along the way, we're hitting you and we want, no surprises, we bring in the union, let's all agree on what clean is, let's all agree on what the expectation is and now we're going to hold you all accountable. And there's the form, you're going to see it, it's not, doesn't start with discipline, it starts with corrective action, it starts with retraining, it starts with support and then it will move if it needs to, to corrective action, it all in collaboration with the unions that we work with to develop that shared expectations philosophy. And again, joint with the city HR department and our supervisors. So the last piece, again, near and dear to Christian Harvey's heart, the talent management piece, really working with Jessica to focus on that minority recruitment, underutilized groups to figure out our outreach, career fairs and different measures we could use and we do feel confident that tonight, we had some examples of some diversity hiring through an intentional process. I think as we bring you those statistics, as we finish up this hiring, there's a bunch of hiring going on right now, so I didn't want to give you a statistical map tonight because it's really fluid, but I'm confident that we're going to be at or above our goals with respect to that recruitment and hiring that we could report probably in the first meeting in September, in the meeting in September, once we get that next batch of hiring and some leadership positions that need to be filled over the next month. So a lot going on, but the short answer is we'll be ready to start school, schools will be clean and safe and we'll have one more SRO in our schools starting next year as well, superintendent's meeting with the chief and the team there to determine the best deployment of that asset. So a lot of collaboration, a lot of work, a lot of meetings and I want to commend Will and his group, Lee and his team, Chris Harmon and his team, I mean, just Tony over here is hiding behind here, but the work Tony's done, the electricians at St. Joe's, I mean, it's just phenomenal on top of the other work orders that they're expected to do on a daily basis, so a really great team effort from top to bottom. So happy to take any questions. Great job.
You've been busy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 17, Committee on Building and School Facilities. Any questions? Comments?
The chairman of the facilities committee, were you going to convene a group of us to discuss some of the outstanding issues?
We're going to, yeah, we're going to have two building committee meetings. I'm going to have one in Wendell Cross specific, the other is spaces.
Other things specific?
Yes.
Do you have dates on those, any chance?
I'm trying to get the Wendell Cross one worked out first and then we'll, shortly thereafter, we'll have a couple...
No hurry, just want to make sure I put it on account.
And we've got one more item for that building committee, we've got the commissioning agent contract that was out to bid and a selection, so we can get that approved. The Development Corp is helping us push that through quickly so they get that contract done. They've got to be on board for some work, we've got to get up to the state, but we'll run that through the building committee and have you meet Van Zelm, who's the engineering firm that was hired by us and the committee that did lots of school construction projects, very familiar in Connecticut, so I think, and worked with both Newfield and Friar before, so I think it really brings a terrific team together and we feel confident we'll be able to get out to bid with work over the next couple of months and get that project rolling.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone's good on 17? Item 18, Committee on Building and School Facilities, use of school facilities by outside organizations. Any questions, concerns? Good on that. Superintendent's notification to the board. Any questions for the superintendent? Okay.
Commissioner, may I just make a comment that prior to our next meeting, and there are a lot of events that will be taking place almost the beginning of school, and so just as an informational tidbit, on August 13, our administrators report to work and on August 19 and 20, there's new teach orientation as well as professional development for our administrators and we begin some ongoing professional development in August and certainly centered around some of the new curriculum that we have. On August 21 is our back-to-school rally. It is going to be at Fulton Park this year, so that will be a different venue and then of course, our students report to work on August 26.
Thank you, Doctor. Okay, there is no executive session tonight, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I don't want to stay.
You're welcome to.
We could vote it down.
It's not cool enough. Actually, you don't have...
So moved.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, seeing we've lost a corner, this meeting is just dissolved.
It's just, it's talking at this point. Better know that, I'd have left with Carolyn.